Please be upon you. This is Aiden Mirza from reading our reason dot com and we're gonna continue on with our Quran study session. This is chapter eighteen of the Quran, a complete revelation, and I am on reader dot corona dot com. So let's begin. In the name of God, the Almighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. Praise belongs to God who sent down the writ upon his servant and place not therein deviation straight, that it might warn of severe punishment from him and bring glad tidings to the believers who do righteous deeds, that they have a goodly reward, they ever remaining therein, and warn those who say God has taken a son. So praise belongs to God who send down the writ, which is the set of commands that are, we are supposed to follow. Uh, and the Quran contains this writ in totality. This is what the Alkitab is. And this was sent to uh, God's servant Muhammad. And God has not placed in it deviation as in its self-consistent logical um, and um, easy to follow. It's straight. Um, it doesn't have any hmm illogicality, inconsistencies. So anyway, that is so that it warns of severe punishment from him and brings glad tidings to believers, that they have a goodly reward, uh, those who do righteous deeds. This right, doing righteous deeds is really what the Quran is focused on. Uh, whereas religions, they're focused on rituals and um, shortcuts and all sorts of stuff. Um, but the Quran's focus is on righteous deeds, the, you know, giving to people in need, speaking kindly to mankind, keeping to your promise, stuff like that, that the Quran details many places. So. They have a remaining therein and warn those who say God has taken a son. No knowledge have they thereof, and nor had their fathers. Grave is the word that comes out of their mouths. They speak only a lie. So they do not have any knowledge that God has taken a son. These are their vain desires and um, um, if they do, then they need to bring their evidence. Um. But they are only speaking a lie. Thou then mightest thou destroy thy soul in their footsteps from grief, if they believe not in this narrative. We made what is upon the earth an adornment for it, that we might try them, which of them is best indeed, and we will make what is there on barren ground. This is the focus of this chapter, that God has made everything on the earth have an adornment for us, for us, as in we, uh, we are tempted by it, we want it, we want to possess it, uh, we hoard it, we run after it. Uh, and that is a trying part, and to see which of us is best indeed, which of us are is patient and looking for the hereafter. And we will make what is there on barren ground. Now, this is talking about the day of judgment when God will destroy everything. Um, but that is the day of judgment. Um, we shall see that in this chapter, this treats of localized instances of this uh, this process. So let's continue. If thou think think is that the companions of the caves and then scripture were a wonder among our proofs. Now we talk, uh, we, we get into the narrative of the companions of the cave. And my understanding is that this is talking to Muhammad who uh, came across this cave and the inscription, and God is giving him further, giving him an explanation of what happened or or an insight. When the, when the young men took shelter in the cave and said, our Lord, give thou us mercy from thyself and furnish thou us out of our affair with rectitude. Then smote we their ears in the cave a number of years, then raised we them up, that we might know which of the two parties would best calculate what they had tarried in time. We relate to thee their report with the truth. There were young men who believed in their Lord, and we increased them in guidance. And we strengthened their hearts when they stood up and said, our Lord is the Lord of the heavens and the earth. We will not call besides him to any God. For then would we have set a wanton falsehood. These are people have taken up gods other than him. Oh, that they but brought concerning them a clear authority, and who is more unjust than he who invents a lie about God? So you see, they're, they're saying, where is the authority for setting up gods besides God? Or other than God, and who is more unjust than he who invents a lie about God? And when you have withdrawn from them and what they serve save God, take shelter in the cave. Your Lord will unfold for you out of his mercy, and furnish you out of your affair all that you need. And thou seest the sun when it rises, it inclines away from their cave to the right, and when it sets, it passes away from them on the left. And they in the opening thereof, that is among the proofs of God, whom God guides, he is guided, and whom he sends astray. For him thou wilt find no guiding ally. So now this is addressing the messenger Muhammad, uh, who came across this cave, and God is giving him further descriptors. And thou think is them awake when they are asleep, and we caused them to turn to the right and the left. Um, and their dog was stretching out its two paws on the threshold. Hadst thou looked upon them, thou wouldst have turned away from them in flight and been filled with terror of them. Okay, that's one uh, translation. Another one would be, and thou think is that they were awake when they were asleep. And we caused them to turn to the right and left. So this was still talking about the companions of the cave. Um, as in, my understanding is that they were in, in a status um, condition. Um, they were awake, uh, you would have thought that they were awake, uh, when they were actually asleep. And you know, the descriptor about the dog, the dog was stretching out its two paws on the threshold, as in, it seemed like he was guarding the cave, the entrance of the cave. Uh, and had you looked upon them, you would have turned away from them in flight and been filled with terror of them. So. They were in a, in, in kind of a sleepy sleepfulness and wakefulness state in, in between. That's my understanding of it. Uh, the other thing to notice is this mention of a dog, the, the believers had a dog. Now this, if you know anything about the religion Islam, uh, dogs are a no-go, right? So there you go. The Quran doesn't support that. Nineteen, and thus we raise them up, that they might question one another. Said a speaker among them, how long have you tarried? They said, we have tarried a day or a part of a day. Said they, your Lord best knows how long you have tarried. Um, this tearing part, this is interesting because on the day of judgment, God asks them, how long have you tarried? He asks the unbelievers. How long have you, did you tarry on, on the earth? And they said, we tarried a day or a part of a day. Ask those who keep count. So. Um, again, this is a localized instance, if you will. I mean, God is showing his proofs as in he can, um, you know, put people to sleep or in, in a status state and then bring them back, you know, um, to life, because these guys were in the cave for hundreds of years. Um, and similarly, when he, uh, when we die, he has the power to resurrect us and he will. Okay, said they, your Lord best knows how long you have tarried, then send one of you with this coin of yours to the city, and let him see what food is purest, and bring you a provision therefrom, and let him be circumspect, and let not anyone be aware of you. They, if they come to know of you, will stone you, or turn you back to their creed, and you will then not be successful ever. This stoning thing, you'll notice a lot of uh, communities had this practice where they would stone the, the people who came to them with the guidance. Um, which um, uh, again, in the religion Islam, there is a stoning punishment as well, which is not in the Quran. So. Just trying to show you the parallels between, you know, the people then and the people now. And thus did he acquaint us with them, that they might know that the promise of God is true, and that the hour, there is no doubt concerning it. When they contended with one another about their affair, then they said, build over them a structure, their Lord best knows concerning them. Those who prevailed over their affairs said, we will take for them a place of worship. Okay. A lot of interpretations exist about this. What does this mean? Basically, I just kind of take the viewpoint that this is talking about God's promise being true, as in when it was uh, hmm, I guess discovered that these men were in the cave for this long. Um, and then the, the people around them had been destroyed. Because again, we're trying to keep it with, well, we're, we're seeing it from the theme of, you know, God has made everything on the earth as an adornment and he will make it a barren ground. And this is the uh, this is the summary of all of these narratives. There are more narratives. You'll see that they kind of have the same summary, that you know, everything will be destroyed. So to keep that uh, idea in mind, my understanding is that uh, these men, when they were discovered, um, then um, the people were amazed. And uh, the, the people they left, these men, they left that community, that community had been destroyed because it had been hundreds of years and so on. New, new community came in and uh, popped up and they were amazed that these men had been in this uh, structure for, in this cave for, for hundreds of years. They will say three, the fourth of them, their dog, and they will say five, the sixth of them, their dog, guessing at the unseen, and they will say seven, and the eighth of them, their dog. Say thou, my Lord best knows their number. None knows them save a few. So argue thou not concerning them, say with a patent argument, and ask thou not an opinion concerning them from any of them. Because these men have, don't have knowledge. All they do is guess day in, day out. They, they just have these, you know, uh, assumptions, you know, that's why they're taking God, they're saying God has taken a son, because they don't really have any knowledge. And so here they're, they're guessing at the unseen, that you know, there were six of them, four of them, but the answer is, my Lord best knows their number. And say thou not of anything, I will do that tomorrow, save it God wills. And remember thou thy Lord when thou forgettest, and say thou, it may be that my Lord will guide me nearer than this in rectitude. Now, this is the famous uh, um, you hear Muslims say this all the time, Insha Allah. So this is where this comes from. Um, if God so wills. And they tarried in their cave three hundred years and they increased by nine. So these men were in the cave for three hundred years. And they increased by nine. This, my understanding is that they uh, they aged by nine years. That's my understanding. When they were in the cave, they aged by nine years. When he, in, in actuality, they were in the cave for three hundred years. Twenty-six, say thou, God best knows how long they tarried. To him belongs the unseen of the heavens and the earth. How he sees it and how he hears. They have no ally besides him, and he ascribes not a partnership in his judgment to anyone. And recite thou what is revealed to thee of the writ of thy Lord. There is none to change his words, and thou will find no refuge besides him. And make thou thy soul patient with those who call to their Lord morning and evening, seeking his face. And let not thine eyes pass beyond them, desiring the adornment of the life of this world. And obey thou not him, whose hearts we have made heedless of our remembrance, and follows his way in desire, and whose affair is neglect. And say thou, the truth is from your Lord. Then who so wills, let him believe, and who so wills, let him deny. We have prepared for the wrongdoers of fire, its walls encompassing them, and if they seek succor, they will be given succor by water like molten brass, burning the faces. Evil the drink, and evil the resting place. Those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, we cause not to be lost the reward of one who does good works. Those have gardens of perpetual abode beneath which rivers flow. They are adorned therein with bracelets of gold, and wear green garments of finest silk and brocade, reclining therein upon couches. Exhale the reward and fear the resting place. And strike thou for them a similitude. Two men, we made for one of them two gardens of grape wines, and surrounded them with date palms and placed between them crops. So now we get to the next. Um, well, this is a similitude, it's an example, uh, but it's of two men. And one of them is God fearing and one of them is not. And um, he, this again is keeping with the theme with God, uh, trying us with the adornment of the earth, to see which of us is best indeed, and he will make it um, um, nothing, you'll destroy it. Um, you'll see this is happening here. Each of the two gardens produced its fruit and were wrong nothing thereof, and we caused to flow in the midst of them a river. And he had fruit, and said to his companion, while conversing with him, I am greater than thee in wealth and mightier in men. And he entered his garden while he was wronging his soul, saying, I think not that this will ever perish. And I think not that the hour will strike, and if I am brought back to my Lord, I will find better than this as a final destination. His companion said to him while conversing with him, denies thou him who created thee from dust and from a sperm drop, then fashioned thee a man. But as for me, he is God, my Lord, and I ascribe not a partnership with my Lord to anyone. Okay, so this is interesting, right? His companion is saying, uh, denies thou him who created thee from dust. Um, and what is, what did he say? He said, I think not the hour will strike. So this is really the key of it. He, he is denying God's power to resurrect. Uh, when his companion is reminding him, don't you see that he, God created you from dust, then from a sperm drop, then fashioned you as a man? So this is the part, I mean, yeah, just trying to show you what denial is in this um, in this example. And also, um, he, he reprimands him. He says, he's God, my Lord, and I ascribe not a partnership with my Lord to anyone. You'll notice here that this other guy didn't talk about setting up partners, but he did, because he said, I am um, where did it go? I'm greater than thee in wealth and mighty in men. So he's placing his trust in wealth and men. See, this is setting up a partnership with God. And he, he uh, goes on to regret it then. Um. Anyway, to continue. And oh, that when thou wast entering thy garden, thou hadst but said, what God has willed. There is no strength save in God, although thou seest me less than thee in wealth and children. It may be that my Lord will give me better than thy garden, and will send upon it a calamity from the sky, so that it becomes mire ground, or its water becomes sunken, so that thou canst not find it. As in, this is all from the grace of God, the water you're getting in, you know, that your garden is preserved from the calamities. Now here's the thing, you see, he's uh, he's admonishing him and exhorting him to say, why didn't you say what God has willed? This is what Muslims say, Masha Allah. Uh, which most of them don't even know what the meaning is, but Masha Allah means what God has willed. Um. And then there's no strength save in God. Again, he's reminding him that there's only protection and, and power belongs to God alone. Not in wealth and children. You won't find safety and refuge with them. Okay, so what this guy said happened. And encompass were his fruits, and he began to wring his hands for all that he had spent therein, but it was desolate and it ruins. And he said with that, I had not ascribed a partnership with my Lord to anyone. And he had no band to help him besides God, and he could not help himself. Thereupon, protection belongs to God, the truth. He is best in reward and best in final outcome. So there you go. This is, again, this mirrors what we, uh, what the, I told you is the beginning of the chapter is, uh, talks about. We made what is upon the earth an adornment for it, that we might try them, which of them is best indeed, and we will make the, make what is there on barren ground. So he got a taste of that in this life. Okay, so let's keep going. Forty-five, and strike thou for them the similitude of the life of this world, as water, which we send down from the sky. Then the vegetation of the earth mingles with it, then it becomes dry stalks which the winds scatter, and God is omnipotent over everything. Again, see the same theme. Wealth and sons are an adornment of the life of this world, but the righteous deeds which endure are better as reward in the sight of thy Lord and better as hope. And the day we set in motion the mountains, and thou seest the earth emerge, and we gather them, then will we not leave behind one of them? And they will be said before thy Lord in ranks, you have come to us as we created you the first time, yet you claim that we would never make an appointment for you. And the writ will be set down, and thou will see the lawbreakers apprehensive of what is therein. And they will say, woe is us. What writ is that, this that leaves behind nothing small or great, save it has enumerated it. And they will find what they did present, and thy Lord wrongs no one. So the writ will be set down, and the lawbreakers will be apprehensive that this contains all their record, what, whatever they, they, they did, because again, this has to do with. We made what is upon the earth as an adornment for it, that we might try them, which of them is best indeed. So their deeds are being recorded. And they will be given the full reward on that day, the day of judgment. And when we said to the angels, submit to Adam, then they submitted, not so Iblees, he was of the dominai, and was perfidious towards the command of his Lord. Take you, I mean, to take you him and his progeny as allies instead of me, and they are enemy to you, evil in exchange for the wrongdoers. So that's, uh, but against translation, the traditionists would say that it's, it says here, not so Iblees, he was of the jinn. And when he says jinn, he's talking about the uh, unseen creatures. And uh, in the, Iblees was perfidious towards the command of his Lord, because God uh, commanded him to submit to Adam, and he refused because he was proud. Um, and God is saying that, do you take him and his progeny as allies instead of me? So this being also procreates, like humans. Um. That's my understanding with fifty-one, I made them not witness to the creation of the heavens and the earth, nor to the creation of themselves. And I take not those who lead astray as support. As in, um, well, we'll just leave it at that. And the day he says, call my partners whom you claim. Then they will call them, but they will not respond to them, and we will make between them a place of ruin. So now God is telling them to test their claim. So you claimed all this, so now call them. Uh, they don't respond then. They don't respond now, and they won't respond then. Fifty-three, and the lawbreakers will see the fire and realize that they are to fall therein, and they will not find an escape therefrom. And we have expounded for men in this Quran, every similitude, but man is more than anything contentious. We already looked at some of the similarities in this chapter. But uh, man is uh, more than anything contentious. Another understanding of this is, another translation would be that man is about more, most things contentious. And I see that all the time. You talk to people, people always want to argue with you, whatever the subject, whatever they know, they don't know, they, they assume they know, whatever, they're just gonna keep arguing with you. Uh, so to me, that makes more sense, that in a man in most things is contentious. He wants, he's an argumentative creature. Fifty-five, and they prevented men from believing when the guidance came to them, and from asking forgiveness of their Lord, only that the practice of the former peoples should come to them, or the punishment should come to them face to face. So this is why they are, do not believe when guidance came to them and asking forgiveness. Why? Because uh, the practice of the former peoples was that they mocked, ridiculed, they um, they didn't even try to understand one tenth. Um, that's the practice of the former peoples, right? So they are following their practice. Uh, or the punishment should come to them face to face. This is the punishment of God, where he seals your hearing, sight, and understanding. So then you can't, um, you're, you won't be guided because God has sealed your heart. And we send the emissaries only as bearers of glad tidings and warnings, and those who ignore warning contend in vanity to refute the truth thereby, and they have taken my proofs, and that whereof they are warned in mockery. You see? This is the practice of the farmers. They took the proofs of God and what they are warned in mockery. And they contend in vanity to refute the truth thereby. This, this, this is, this is right on the nose. You, you talk to the unbelievers, those who don't believe, and you just talk to them and try to, you know, reason with them and show them proofs on the Quran, and they just, just try to trap you, try to confuse you, try to just manipulate you. They don't really, they're not sincere about understanding. And who is more unjust than he who is reminded the proofs of his Lord, then turns away therefrom and forgets what his hands have sent ahead. We have placed upon their hearts coverings lest they should understand it and in their ears deafness. And though thou invites them to the guidance, they will not be guided than ever. See, this is the punishment of God in this life. See, or the punishment should come to them face to face. This is the punishment. But thy Lord is the forgiver, the possessor of mercy, were he to take them to task for what they have earned, he would hasten for them the punishment. But they have an appointment, they will not find besides it an escape. If men were, if God were to take men to task for what they earned, they would not, he would not leave a creature on the earth, but he gives them time. See? He has appointed, he has appointed for them an appointment, which is the day of judgment. And when that comes, there will be no escape. See, there was no escape uh, from the fire. And the lawbreakers will see the fire and realize that they are to fall therein, and they will not find an escape therefrom. Okay. And those cities, we destroyed them when they did wrong, and we made for their destruction an appointment. And when Moses said to his servant, I will not seize until I reach the conference of the two seas, though I continue for an age. Then when they reached their meeting between them, they forgot their fish, and it took its path into the sea, tunneling. And when they had passed on, he said to his servant, bring thou us our meal. We have met from this our journey with fatigue. Said he, hast thou considered? When we took shelter at the cave, then I forgot the fish, and there caused me to forget it only to Satan, lest I should remember it, and it took its path into the sea amazingly. This is one of the things that Satan does. He causes men to forget. Um. Anyway, this is talking about the, the meeting that Moses had, well, Moses walked with a man, uh, who was given knowledge and uh, you know, he was doing things that Moses didn't understand. Uh, so this is what I talk about it. And this has to do with the understanding that we don't really see the, the big picture, the wisdom behind some of the things that happen, that God uh, makes happen, um, and we short sight it. So to be patient is the best um, thing to do. So to continue, he said, this is what we were seeking, and they turned back in their footsteps retracing. And they found a servant from among our servants, to whom we had given mercy from us and taught knowledge from us. Moses said to him, shall I follow thee, that thou teach me something of what thou hast been, or thought of sound judgment? Said he, thou canst never be patient with me, and how canst thou be patient with what thou hast not encompassed in knowledge? He said, thou will find me if God wills patient, and I will not disobey thee in any matter. Said he, if thou follows me, ask thou me not about anything until I make mention of it to thee. So they went forth. When they had embarked on the boat, he made a hole therein. He said, hast thou made a hole therein to drown its people? Thou hast done a grievous thing. Said he, said I not, that thou canst never be patient with me? He said, take thou me not to task for what I forgot, nor burden thou me in my affair with difficulty. So they went forth. When they had met a lad, he killed him. He said, hast thou killed the pure soul for other than a soul? Thou hast done a terrible thing. Now this uh, Musa is talking about the law, the writ of God, which uh, does not allow the killing of a man, uh, except for another man. Um. Life for life. Said he, said I not to thee, that thou canst never be patient with me. He said, if I ask thee about anything after this, then keep thou not company with me, thou hast attained from me an excuse. So now Musa is obviously, um, reprimanding him that, well, you know, you, you killed the pure soul for other than a soul, and he said, don't, I told you would not be patient with me, and uh, Musa gets another chance. He's able to proceed with another excuse. So they went forth. When they had come to the people of a city, they asked its people for food, but they refused them hospitality, and they found therein a wall upon the point of collapse, and he set it upright. He said, if thou hadst wished, thou couldst have taken for it recompense. Said he, this is the parting between me and thee. I will inform thee of the interpretation of that, which thou couldst not be patient. Okay, so. Now he's gonna tell why he did what he did. As for the boat, it belonged to poor people working on the sea, and I desired to damage it, for there was behind them a king taking every boat by force. And as for the lad, his parents were believers, and we feared he would burden them within ordinancy and denial. And we desired that their Lord should give them in exchange one better than him in purity and near in affection. Now, I just want you to pay attention to this. Here it says, and I desire to damage it. So this was him acting uh, under his own um, knowledge and, and power and, you know, on his own, right? Now it shifts to, and we feared, and we desired. So I'll leave that for you to think about. I don't want to give you my interpretation, anyway. And as for the wall, it belonged to two fatherless lads in the city, and there was beneath a treasure for them. And their father had been righteous, and thy Lord desired that they should reach maturity and to bring forth their treasure as a mercy from thy Lord. And they did not, I, I did it not by my command. See, now this one, he didn't do by his command, by his own inclination. That is the interpretation of what thou couldst not be patient in. You'll notice also the two fatherless lads. This, this two thing is woven in the Quran's fabric. I mean, this is one of the signs of, of God. I, I invite you to read my book, But In Our Reason, I think, I think it's chapter two, proofs and pairs, where I show you, where I bring some of the verses from the Quran to show you how this is so woven in the Quran, this despairing, you know? Cause God says he created everything in pairs. And they asked thee about Dulqannan, say thou, I will recite to your remembrance of him. We established him in the earth and gave him to everything away, so he went his way. Now this Dulqannan character is again, um, we're so far removed from when the Quran was re, being revealed that, I don't know who this person is. You know, there's theories advanced about who he is or what he is. Regardless, uh, we're trying to get to the moral lessons behind this. So he went his way. When he had reached the setting of the sun and found it setting in a murky, murky spring and found a people nearby. We said, oh Dulqannan, thou We said, oh Dulqanen, thou shalt either punish or take concerning them good. He said, as for him who does wrong, we will punish him. Then will he be brought back to his lord and he will punish him with a terrible punishment. And as for him who believes and works righteousness, for him is the best reward and we will speak lightly to him from our command. Whoso believes and works righteousness. This is again, this is just not working for the Muslims because the Muslims say you have to. Do this Shahada and you start, need to start doing ritual prayer and you need to do this and that. When the Quran is talking generically, believes and works righteousness, believes in God in the last day and works righteous deeds. This is it. Then he went his way. When he had reached the rising of the sun, he found it rising upon a people for whom we had not appointed besides it any cover. Thus, and we have encompassed what is with it in knowledge. Then he went his way. When he had reached between the two barriers and found besides them a people scarcely understanding speech. They said, oh Dulqanen, Yajuj and Majuj are worker workers of corruption in the land. So may be a point for thee payment that thou make between us and them a barrier. He said, that wherein my lord has established me is better, but assist me with strength. I will make between you and them a dam. Give me sheets of iron. When he had made level between the two openings, he said, blow. When he had made it a fire, he said, bring me to pour thereon molten gra- brass. And they could not pass over it and they could not pierce it. He said, this is a mercy from my lord, but when the promise of my lord comes to pass, he will make it level and the promise of my lord is true. And we will leave them that day to surge one upon another and the trumpet will be blown and we will gather them together. So, on the day of judgment, this barrier will be torn asunder and the Yajuj and Majuj will come out and that's the day. Now, I know there's a lot of theology be- behind this Yajuj and Majuj, who the Christians called Gog and Magog. Hey, I don't get into this stuff because again, that's like predicting, you know, the day of judgment and stuff and that knowledge has been denied to us. God, God is telling us in the Quran that on the day of judgment, the barrier built by Dulqanen will be destroyed. Why? Because he said it himself. He said, um. This is a mercy from my lord, but when the promise of my lord comes to pass, he will make it level. Okay, brother Gans is an interesting footnote here, so we, let's read that. Um, so he was, he's telling us to go and look at these three verses uh in reference, which are the only remaining verses in which. Words from this root, which is what, dukkan, yeah, the, this is dukkan, right? Uh dal, kafkaf occur in the Quran. A review of these verses will confirm that what is meant here is the day in which God Almighty arises. The point Dulqanen is making is that the tomb they have created for Yajuj and Majuj will not withstand the end of the world. And the Yajuj and Majuj, like every other creature, will be brought forward to judgment. He is simply putting the work of his hands into right context with respect to the power and judgment of God. This narrative has been woven into an eschatological expectation by Muslims, the broader scope of which is entirely contrary to clear statements in the Quran, see note to eighteen ninety-six. So, um. He's just saying, you know, I'm just a man and I created this, but when God's command comes, then it'll be destroyed, my work, everything else with it. Again, this is with the theme of the chapter. One hundred, and lay Gehenna bare that day to the false claimers of guidance. Those whose eyes were under a veil from my remembrance and were not able to hear. Do then those who ignore warning think that they can take my servants as allies instead of me? We have prepared Gehenna for the false claimers of guidance as a welcome. See, God has taken us on, that's what they claim, right? And that he's, you know, going to, he's our savior. God is saying, do those who take ignore warning think that they can take my servants as allies instead of me? God is our ally, he is our protector. Say thou, shall we inform you of the greatest losers and deeds? Those whose effort is astray in the life of this world when they think that they are doing good work. Those are they who deny the proofs of their lord and the meeting with him. So their works are in vain and we will assign to them on the day of resurrection no weight. So, what do we get from this? We get from this that you need to look in the Quran to see what the good works are. Because a lot of people are doing a lot of things and they think that they're doing good. But that's what they think. We need to go back into the scripture of God, the Quran, and look at the scripture Quran of God to see what the good works are. Then we know that these are good works. Those who are there, those are they who deny the proofs of their lord and the meeting with him, so their works are in vain. If you don't believe in God in the last day, then you're finished. It doesn't matter what you do, see, this is one thing that. Um, their 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 works are made vain anyway. That is their reward Gehenna because they denied and took our proofs and our messages in mockery. Those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, they have the gardens of paradise as a welcome. They abiding eternally therein. They will not desire any change therefrom. Say thou, were the sea ink for the words of my lord, the sea would be exhausted before the words of my lord were exhausted. Though we brought the like thereof as replenishment. Say thou, I am only a mortal like you. It is revealed to me that your god is one god. So whoso looks looks to the meeting with his lord, let him do works for righteousness and ascribe not a partnership in the service of his lord to anyone. If you're looking for meeting your lord, you need to do this. The other thing is, God is giving us here a very poignant example. He's saying if the sea was ink for the words of your lord and the sea would be exhausted before the words of your lord were exhausted. As in the Quran is again a complete scripture. It doesn't, if God would have wanted, he would have. They, because his words are never exhausted, see? But the Quran is a complete scripture. It's it, you don't need to go outside the Quran. This is really what I'm getting at. For guidance. Okay, we're gonna continue on. This is chapter nineteen. In the name of God, the Almighty and the merciful. Isaac refuge in God from Satan, the accursed, chapter nineteen. Now, these are the mukattat again that I've talked about earlier. A remembrance of the mercy of thy lord to his servant Zachariah. Zachariah, I guess. I'm not sure how to pronounce this in English. In in Arabic is Zachariah. When he called to his lord with a secret call, he said, my lord, feeble are become the bones within me and my head is aflame with white hair. Yet never have I been wretched in my call to thee, my lord. But I fear my heirs after me and my wife is barren, so give thou me from thyself an heir. To inherit from me and to inherit from the house of Jacob Yakub and make thou him my lord pleasing. So, Zachariah is uh asking God, is calling to God, this is, uh. This is one of the salats. Okay, this is a duty to call to our lord, to ask him for help. He's asking for God's help. Uh specifically, he uh he is asking God for an heir so that he inherits from him. And the house of Yakub, and he's not talking about material possessions here, he's talking about uh the al-kittab. Um, because um. One of the, well, we'll get to that. Anyway, so he's talking about in uh that the some uh that his heir would inherit from him, the the writ. Um, because he is a preserver, he he is tasked with the um with the writ. This is one of the things that I'm gonna talk about later. Anyway, oh Zachariah, we bring the glad tidings of a lad whose name is John Yahya. We have not made a namesake for him before. He said, my lord, how will I have a lad when my wife is barren and I have reached extreme old age? Said he, thus said thy lord, it is easy for me and I created thee before when thou wast nothing. He said, my lord, make thou for me a proof. Said he, thy proof is that thou shall not speak to men three nights being sound. And he went out to his people from the chamber and instructed them, give you glory morning and evening. As in he was struck dumb, uh he couldn't talk. Uh so he obviously had to use signs. Um, and he said, he went, when he went out, he instructed his people to give God glory morning and evening. This is a salat. Oh John, hold thou fast the writ and we gave him judgment and a child and tenderness from us and purity. And he was in prudent fear and dutiful to his parents and he was not arrogant or defiant. So Yahya, when he was born, he was commanded, hold fast the writ. This is, uh. This is of, uh this is what the prophet's mission is, purpose is, to hold fast the writ, to judge by the writ, the al-kittab. So that's what he inherited from uh Yakub, the writ. As in he was uh, he was charged with with executing the writ, he was charged with um. Holding fast to the writ. And peace be upon him the day he was born and the day he dies and the day he is raised up alive. Now, right after this starts talking about Isa, Jesus. And remember thou in the writ Mary, when she withdrew from her place to a pla- people to a place in the east, this is Madiam. So she separated herself from them, then we sent to her our spirit and he appeared to her as a mortal without fault. Uh this is the rule. Um, anyway, she said, I seek refuge in the Almighty from thee if thou be in prudent fear. He said, I am only a messenger of thy lord that I might give thee a pure lad. Twenty, she said, how can I have a lad when no mortal has touched me? Na- neither have I been unchaste. He said, thus said thy lord, it is easy for me and that we will make him a proof for mankind and a mercy from us and it is a matter ordained. Then she bore him and withdrew with him to a distant place. And the pains of childbirth brought her to the trunk of the date palm. She said, with that I had died before this and been utterly forgotten. Then he called to her from below her, grieve thou not, thy lord has placed beneath thee a stream. And shake thou towards thee the trunk of the date palm. It will drop upon thee ripe, fresh dates. Now. She realizes when he was born that he could speak. See, this is what this is getting at. Cause he was a sign, he was a sign for mankind. So he could speak when he was in the cradle. And he had other um miracles that he could perform. So, to continue, where were we? Okay. So eat thou and drink thou and let thine eye be comforted. And if thou see any mortal, say thou, I have vowed to the Almighty a fast, so I will not speak to this day to any man. Um. And she brought him to her people bearing him. They said, oh Mary, thou hast done an unheard of thing. Oh sister of Haroon, Aaron, thy father was not an evil man and thy father, thy mother was not unchaste. Now, if you know anything about the story of Musa, Musa had a brother called Haroon. Just letting you, just showing you that this is the same, this is the same name. So that opens up quite a big can of worms for the traditionalist and the Christian and all that, those guys. Then she pointed to him, they said, how can we speak to one who is in the cradle, a child? I wonder, brother Gans, the footnote here. Yeah, he just leaves it. Uh open. Then she pointed to him, they said, how can we speak to one who is in the cradle, a child? He said, I am the servant of God. He has given me the writ and made me a prophet and made me blessed wherever I be. And enjoying upon me the duty and the purity as long as I live and dutiful to my mother and he has not made me arrogant or wretched. And peace be upon me the day I was born and the day I die and the day I'm raised up alive. Okay, look at this. First things that come out of his mouth, I am the servant of God. See? This is the first thing that comes out of his mouth, I'm the servant of God. That is Jesus, son of Mary, the word of truth concerning which they doubt. It is not for God to take a son. Glory be to him. When he decrees a matter, he but says to it, be thou, and it is. And God is my lord and your lord, so serve him. This is a straight path. Then the parties differed among themselves. Then woe to those who ignore warning from the meeting of a tremendous day. How they hear and how they see the day they come to us, but the wrongdoers are this day in manifest error. And warn thou them of the day of regret, when the matter will be concluded, but they are in heedlessness and they do not believe. We will inherit the earth and whoso is thereon and to us will they be returned. And remember thou in the writ Abraham, he was a man of truth and a prophet. Or or you could translate this, he was a uh saddeekan means uh one who confirms. So he was a confirming prophet, as in he was confirming the day of judgment as well, like the prophets before him. And as I told you, the one, one of the things the prophet does is that he is in charge of the writ. And when he said to his father, oh my father, why service thou what neither hears nor sees, nor can avail thee anything? Oh my father, there has come to me knowledge that has come not to thee, so follow thou me. I will lead thee to an even path. See, he was a prophet because he was given um scripture. The writ. Which contains knowledge. Okay, I will lead thee to an even path. Oh my father, serve thou not the Satan. The Satan is to the Almighty defiant. Oh my father, I fear lest there touch thee a punishment from the Almighty and thou be an ally to the Satan. So. If they, if God decides to punish you, he makes you an ally to the Satan, to the shatan. Then you're done. Said he, art thou averse to my gods, O Abraham? If thou seest not, I will stone thee, so depart thou from me a good while. Again, see the stoning thing? He said, peace be upon thee. I will ask forgiveness for thee of my lord. He is gracious towards me. And I will withdraw from you and that to which you call besides God and I will call to my lord. It may be that I will not in my call to my lord be wretched. So when he had withdrawn from them and what they served besides God, we gave him Isaac and Jacob, Isak and Yakub. And each we made a prophet. Two sons. And we gave to them of our mercy and we made for them a tongue of truthfulness exalted. This them, them is in um. The plural as in more than two, because it's talking about Ibrahim, Isak and Yakub. And remember thou in the writ Musa, he was sincere and was a messenger and a prophet. Um. Why was he a messenger prophet? Because he came to warn uh Pharaoh. The people of Pharaoh, which is the role of the messenger and he was a prophet because he was given the writ. And we called to him from the right side of the mount and brought him near in private con- conference. And we gave him of our mercy his brother Haroon, a prophet. See, Haroon was also in charge of the writ. And remember, remember thou in the writ Ishmael, he was true to the promise. And he was a messenger and a prophet. This again could be translated as, he was a. Sadiqulwad, he was also, he was a confirmer of the promise, the promise is the day of judgment. And he was a messenger prophet. He enjoined upon his people the duty and the purity and was pleasing in the sight of his lord. Now, the traditionalists again understands this word, salat to mean the ritual prayer when the Quran is giving it a general. Uh meaning, which means to to perform the commands of God, which are present in the writ and and. Uh glorifying, praising, calling to God, these are all duties. No one is contesting him with that with that. What what we're contested, what what the point is that he has a very specific regimen. Uh a ritual prayer, which is really yoga movements. And he's saying that this is what. The word salat means, this is the only thing that word salat means and that's not what the Quran, how the Quran treats of this word. So. Um, a lot of people get hung up on this, so just trying to again show you what the understanding is from the Quran. And it, again, if you want to challenge me on this, then please, I suggest you look at this word in the Quran across. The Quran and in context and you'll see that this does not hold up, that this is a ritual prayer done five times a day. While facing, while facing a stone idol in Mecca, which is what the Kaba is. Let's be honest here. And remember thou in the writ, it reads, he was a man of truth and a prophet. See, again, he was a, he was a confirming prophet, saddeekun nabiun. And we raised him to a high station. Those are they whom God favored among the prophets of the progeny of Adam. And those we will, and of those we bore with nuh. And of the progeny of Ibrahim and Israel, and of those we guided and chose. When the proofs of the Almighty were recited to them, they fell down in submission weeping. But there succeeded them successors who caused the duty to be lost and followed thus, they will meet with error. Save he who repents and believes and works righteousness, for those will enter the garden and they will not be wronged in anything. Gardens of perpetual abode that the Almighty has promised his servants in the unseen, his promise is to come to pass. They will hear therein no vain speech, only peace, and they will have therein provision, morning and evening. That is the garden which we cause those to inherit among our servants who are in prudent fear. And we come down only by the command of thy lord. Unto him belongs what is before us and what following us and what is in between. And never is thy lord forgetful, lord of the heavens and the earth and what is between them. So serve thou him and be thou steadfast in his service. Knowest thou one name like him? And man says, when I am dead, am I then to be brought forth alive? Does not man remember that we created him before when he was nothing? Then by thy lord, we will gather them and the Satans. Then will we bring them to be present round about Gehenna on bended knee. This is Jahanum, by the way, uh. A lot of people probably don't know what this word means. You could translate it as hellfire if you wish. A lot of people probably don't know what this word means. You could translate it as hellfire if you wish. Then will we extract from every sect those of them most severe towards the Almighty in disdain. Every sect, every religion. Religions divide people into sects. And then will be best, well, that's my understanding. Sect persuasion is how he puts it, how he translates it. Let's look at twenty eight four. Okay, Pharaoh exalted himself in the earth and made it, and made its people sects. A number among them he oppressed, slaughtering their sons and sparing their women, he was the workers of corruption. Yeah, so uh. I guess it's just um, a sect could be translated as just, you know, a grouping. Then will we best know those most worthy to be burned therein. And there is not one of you save will arrive at it, that is upon thy lord and inevitably decreed. Then will we deliver those who are in prudent fear and leave the wrongdoers therein on bended knee. And when a proof is recited to them as clear signs, those who ignore warning say to those who heed warning. Which of the two factions is better in standing and better in assembly? But how many a generation we destroyed before them, which was better in possessions and outward appearance? Say thou, whoso is in error, no matter the extent, the Almighty extends for him. When they have seen what they are promised, whether it be the punishment or the hour, then will they know who is worse in position and weaker in force. As in, whoso is in in error, God will, even if he is given everything. You know, the extent of what God extends for him, he still has to face God. And God will inherit what he uh what he has in this world. And he will come to God alone without any support, without any resources. And when they see the punishment, oh. Or the hour, so the punishment here is talking about the the calamity in this world, you know, which happens regularly. Or the hour, so this on a day of judgment, they will know then who is worse in position, weaker in force. And God increases those who were guided in guidance and the enduring things, the righteous deeds are better with thy lord as reward and better as recourse. Verse seventy seven, hast thou then seen him who denies our proofs and says, I will be given wealth and children? Has he looked into the unseen or taken a covenant with the Almighty? No, indeed, we will write down what he says and extend for him the punishment greatly. And we will inherit from him what he says, and he will come to us alone. And they have taken gods besides God that they might be for them an honor. No, indeed, they will deny their service and be a foe to them. Does thou not see that we send the Satans upon the false claimers of guidance inciting them ever onwards? So hasten thou not against them, we but number for them a number. The day we gather those of prudent fear to the Almighty as a crowd of honored guests and drive the lawbreakers to Gehenna as a destination. They will have no power of intercession save he who has taken a covenant with the Almighty. And they say the Almighty has taken a son. You have done a monstrous thing. The heavens are nigh rent therefrom and the earth split open and the mountains fallen in destruction, that they urge upon the Almighty a son. When it behoves not the Almighty to take a son. There is none in the heavens and the earth but comes to the Almighty as a servant. See, remember Jesus saying, I am the servant of God. The first thing he said, he has counted them and he numbered them exactly, and each of them will come to him on the day of resurrection alone. Those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, the Almighty will appoint for them love. And we have made it easy in thy tongue only that thou bear glad tidings therewith to those of prudent fear and thou warn therewith a contentious people. And how many a generation we destroyed before them, perceives thou any of, any one of them or hears thou from them a sound? So warn there with the contentious people because uh one of the roles of Muhammad was that he was a messenger and he was also a prophet. So this finishes up chapter nineteen. And we're almost at the one hour mark, so I'll stop here. We're gonna continue on with chapter twenty in the next session, God willing. Until next time, peace and blessings be upon you.